Now start the public participation session of the meeting. Please come to the mic, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Address you, not that.
Hello, Ren Thompson, 1513 Park Avenue, North State. Happy New Year, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and all the attendants. Here to offer a request tonight about drug overdose and something I'd like to do to be a leader in preventing overdose deaths. This is a pandemic that's affecting a lot of people. As you know, what it's doing is a different news. People are dying simply in Monmouth County or just in Clonan County with a number of rising deaths. And of all of the past recently, the Overdose Prevention Act, or OVA, and what this law does is two very specific things. One is it grants civil and criminal liability to anyone who witnesses an overdose death to call for help, to dial 911. So they won't get in trouble, encourages them to call. And two, it allows anyone who may witness an overdose to get prescribed something called a lhasa. Now that's a opioid overdose antidote. It can stop the effects of the drug and save a person's life. What's going on is a lot of police stations are starting to carry this drug, to carry their first responders, possibly for the fire department. And literally, you know, we've got a lot of jobs, we have large populations that are unfortunately predisposed to substance use, this goes everywhere, addiction, you know, seniors are susceptible to it, and the prevalence rate is about 10 percent of the population that's affected. So we don't want to underestimate the number of people that could be affected. So my ask is that, one, would the council and the two chiefs be willing to promote this act? And I have some free materials, which I gave you in your package, palm cards, and I have posters. We've got this in English and Spanish, because a lot of people are just, you don't know about this law. And two, would we be willing to contemplate having the police force and possibly the fire department, however you want.
Thank you.
Robert Mear, 601 Madison Avenue. I live across the street from the slot building in Crest Plaza. I've lived there for four and a half years, and for four and a half years, they've had two major broken windows right at street level. About a year and a half ago, I called the police department because one of the windows was actually about to fall out. The police department contacted the fire department, who came out there and put up a piece of plywood to protect it. It's now a year and a half later. The plywood is still there, the window was still broken. I looked at it again today with the freezing weather, it would fall out anyway. In addition, during the summer, the stop building, they put up additional netting to catch the debris that's falling off that building. I don't know who expects that building, if anybody expects that building. I think it's a disgraceful sight downtown, and I'd just like to know who's in charge of it. Would we ask him to replace his windows at the end of April?
Could you give us the addresses again?
Sure, it's a slot building right on, I did Crest Plaza, so you can see those windows that have been broken for four and a half years. Thank you. Public code and infrastructure people are. Thank you.
Bernard Holtz, Asbury, H2 Ministry of Alliance. Wish the council a happy new year, pray that it be better, 2014 and 2013. I stand here to ask really a question and never get a response. We talk about the violence in Asbury. We have various committees, various commissions, meetings coming up. But I notice every time I go down to Springwood Avenue, there's an Asbury Park Police Substation. And no matter what time of day, night, go down there or go past it, there's nothing of any activity. It would seem like with that substation there being almost centrally located, we could have walk-in patrols covering the west side, towards Dang's Avenue and what have you. My next question for an answer is, where do you plan to place the cameras that are being proposed? Mostly on the east side or half and half? Because we're always hearing about the trouble that's on the west side, but it's east side that seems to get all the protection. And so in that, in a new year, I'm asking that the council would really take a look and be committed at improving the west side, the lifestyle, the whole nine yards. We're talking about a park, we need more than a park. All the stores and restaurants are on the east side, there's nothing but fields on the west side. No houses or anything of that nature. You're not talking about putting up any stores or restaurants. You're redeveloping Springwood Avenue that used to be the back home and the lifeblood of the west side with parks. So I'd like to get an answer to. Cameras, that substation that seems to be vacant all the time, we're talking about the substation on the east side of Main Street, this will be vacant every single day. Thank you.
Chief, would you like to address the substation, please?
Sure. First of all, there is no substation on the east side of town with that building. I don't know what you're talking about, but there's no substation.
Right next to that new building, that senior citizen building.
West side.
On the west side.
You said the east side.
Yeah.
Excuse me, please, did you come to the mic, please, and respond to that?
We do have a substation on the west side of town, there is no substation on the east side. When we were getting ready to occupy the substation in the senior building, you made it clear that that was not going to be a location where officers were going to be there, nine to five, eight to four, or four to two at night, where they would occupy that office space continuously. That is used, however, by our parking officers, our special officers, as well as the United States Marshal Service, that I arrange to come to town and use that space. They bring with them many resources, they bring with them a lot of personnel, they're in the building, they're out of the building, on our streets where we want them, but they do occupy the building. The other cameras.
Cameras. I will address the camera issue, okay?
Sure. Yes, Mayor.
For the past four months, let's see, Mr. Nuccio, trying city manager, acting city manager, Nuccio, myself, the Asbury Park Housing Authority, the police department, let's see, Senator Beck, we have met on an ongoing basis. Oh, I'm sorry, and Councilman Moore, Councilman Moore.
And Monmouth County Prosecutor.
Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office.
And the chief's staff.
And the, right, the chief's staff. So we have all met on an ongoing basis, and there wasn't a grant that Senator Beck was able to get from the city to repair the cameras in the housing authority. And I made a statement, I said, I cannot sign off if we as citizens pay taxes that go into the federal government, and then they come back and put cameras simply in the housing authority area. I said, I can see we have an even distribution of cameras in all high crime areas, whether it be on the west side or whether it be on some other sides where the police department has identified as high crime areas. And so, we are working, number one, on the housing authority, which is phase one, and then, number two, it will be the high crime areas, and the west side certainly falls into that category. So you can look forward to saying that. And the chief would like to add to that.
Mayor, if I may, just, right now, we have 22 cameras that are located throughout the city. Of those cameras, there are six that are east of Main Street, the remainder of those cameras are on the west side.
Okay, let's see, the third question, I think has something to do with redevelopment. And I'm going to let the Councilman Lefredo talk about that.
We have, we were just out of meeting today, Mayor and I, for the Springwood Avenue redevelopment. This plan is a work on, it was worked on over two years initially, it was Councilman Sanders and myself who were working on the plan. And we set the plan, we had five developers come forward, three have been approved, two have been approved, and the project is actually been, we've received the plans, they are moving forward. Meeting today was about the moving forward in conjunction with the housing authority, it was also Michael's group and Interfaith Neighbors. This should be online soon, we just have to, we just have to work out some things with some property, as far as swapping and getting everything going. There is a plan that's approved, and quite frankly, the center that's going to be built on Springwood Avenue, it's an art center, it's a museum, it is absolutely, I mean, the building itself is absolutely beautiful. Actually, it has been presented to the council before, it's presented, maybe we should bring it back so everybody can take a look at it. But we are moving forward with the plans to redevelop Springwood Avenue. Thank you.
Next.
Jennifer Lambert, happy to be a new resident at 522 Dillon Drive, and hoping to be a business owner of the Asbury Festival Beer Garden at 527 Lake Drive. I can ask a question first, and then I have really organized my thoughts. I was under the impression from Don Sammet that you were going to discuss at your executive committee meeting today, the sewer tap fee issue, and I was wondering if that was discussed?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so I'd just like to give you my thoughts on behalf of myself and my partner on this issue, because it's very obviously important to us. And so unfortunately, I'm not here this evening on happy matters. I'm here regarding the denial of permits to begin construction on the Asbury Festival Beer Garden until we pay an outwage of sewer tap fee of what we've been told is approximately $400,000. We are shocked and astonished that after nine months of working with the city, we come to find out that we are expected to pay this unreasonable exorbitant sewer connection fee. We want to be a partner with the city of Asbury Park, not an advocate against it. We worked with the city manager, city council, planning boards, zoning office, for at least nine months without mention of a $400,000 fee. We were given approvals on demolition permits without mention of a $400,000 fee. Kind of makes a new business feel as if it's been taken for a ride. First and foremost, we cannot afford even an eighth of that fee. We are a small business. What kind of small business do you think could afford this kind of a fee? And if you are a small business owner, would you even consider it, or would you just choose another city? By imposing such fees, you are absolutely destroying development. You are going to have empty buildings. What you are doing is putting the heaviest financial burden on the projects that are the most in need. You're putting the heaviest burden on projects that are the costliest to renovate and occupy. We will be paying taxes, we will be paying quarterly sewer fees and monthly usage fees. So we just don't understand where this exorbitant fee comes from. The government is supposed to foster development. What you are doing is impeding development with this fee. Vacant buildings equal more crime or graffiti. Taking a vacant building and restoring it means jobs, tax revenue, parking revenue. Life comes to the downtown central business district. Last thing, it's beyond frustrating how it's been handled. Our permits for our windows, just our windows, were handed in on December 10th. We did not get a written denial at all, just a verbal, we won't even look at this until the sewer tap fee, and then the $400,000 fee was just kind of thrown at us as an aside. We've not issued anything in writing, no bill, no invoice, no anything in regards to this, and I know you are working on sorting this out, because there seems to be a lot of confusion. But it's been over two weeks now, we're into the third week, and our project is stopped. We cannot.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bernard Dorsey, as my resident for long range, a hell of a property in Asbury. I am the gentleman that's been calling for the last two months. Where is my menorah? I don't see any menorahs in here, thank God, but I don't see where it is. I've talked to this man, Stephen Kay.
Steven.
Steven. Excuse me. Went out with a little grief. I talked to this gentleman, Efele, I talked to Nuccio, I've tried to talk to both of you, never got an answer. And we had the menorah up a few years ago, and then last year, they took it down in the middle of Hanukkah, which is now Thanksgiving this year. And I don't get any answers from attorney, from city manager. Mr. Kay was supposed to call me back, he was the only one that said hello to me. All your people that were talking. And I would just like to hear the council, like you made everybody else, give me an idea of what's going on.
First of all, I'd like to say hello.
Hello. And I am glad to meet all you nice new council people. Except for Mr. Efele, I know he is.
I mean, is there any response? Do we know anything about that?
Really? It's the Sunset Park, it's the first time we're hearing about it, sir.
Really?
Yes.
And nobody in the, oh, well, what's the difference? First time you're hearing about it.
Last year, it did come down, all right.
For what reason?
We were challenged by the American Civil Liberties, all right, about the menorah last year, all right, and that's why it come down. All right, we were one of the ones that were, I, every year, apparently, all right, there are different towns that are singled out for some of their decorations, all right, their holiday decorations. Last year, we had received the notice from American Civil Liberties about it. I mean, I'll go back and see what I can find out about it. I remember the incident.
Could you do that, because I know there are probably a lot of people that are interested as to, you know, if the Civil Liberties may have written.
Are there any documentation?
Excuse me, sir, excuse me. Yep, your three minutes are up, we have to move on. You might want to take it offline tomorrow.
All fine.
Okay.
I don't use computers. Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm Reverend John Bradley of the Ministry of Alliance, and also now the vice president of the Community Senate. I have many things, but I understand now, my three minutes have gone, it's passed. I heard about the redevelopment, and I'm concerned about that, because I hear some modifications being done, which have never been brought to the public. And now we would like to know, what kind of things have been modified? I hear about that, because we were heavily involved, the Ministry of Alliance were heavily involved with the redevelopment meetings. Now I understand there's some, there's some things been changed, some more money's coming down, but why hasn't the public been notified to have some participation in anything? We would like to know the answer to that, and the community wants to know, how are you going forward without that participation? The other thing, I hear about the cameras. The cameras, it's good to put cameras out there, but who's going to operate them? Who's going to maintain them? What kind of results do you expect to get out of them? Or we got cameras out there now, about how many arrests have been made because of our cameras? Do we publicize that we, those cameras are the cause of so many arrests being made? Are the cameras in front of all these convenience stores out there? Mortaring going on, the drugs have been sold? Are there arrests being done? I don't think so. Maybe it's when I'm not looking. I'm down at quite often on Springwood Avenue. You'll probably see me now once a day, maybe more. The other thing that I'm concerned about is some of the things that's going on in administration, and primarily, we're talking about CD/BD grants. My understanding that the estimated amount of funding to be received from HUD is $427,144. We're submitted from the city for approval of $554,000, which represents some $126,000 over and above what you expect to get. And I also understand that, who's supposed to be submitting this grant? Why are they going over? Because in the 2014 annual action plan, there's a line item of $50,000 to an outside agency to complete this city, an Asbury Park year consolidated plan. If all is high and outside agency combined with the $77,000 includes what the administration in this plan violates a 20 percent funding gap for HUD guidelines. I don't know how I was going to explain that. Okay, number of times, I've got many more things, and I, I would like to have permission to make an arrangement, have a meeting with some people of the city council, so we discuss as many items that we have, that we are very much concerned about.
Okay, we'll make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
And just so people know, the Springwood Avenue plan hasn't changed, it's still the plan, but the Springwood Avenue is completely up. Just a matter of who's going to be doing the building, that's what the discussion is on, and where it's going to affect, what the timelines are going to be. Thank you.
Everyone, a way to say Happy New Year to everyone. Did we get the $425,000 from the block grant? Did we receive that, honey?
Did you open up the redevelopment block grant, the, from HUD?
Yes.
All right, the application is in, we're still waiting.
You're spending the money already.
That's the last, the last money from last year's.
Oh, you still had some money from last year? How much did you have?
I'll have to check and see what it was.
Okay. The other thing is, I want to talk about the snow removal too, I thought it was atrocious what happened here. I mean, all you have to do is go two blocks past Sue Henderson's house in the sort of blacktop in Ocean Township. I think we had the same snowstorm as everybody else. I mean, my street, Eighth Avenue, was terrible. I saw one truck go down, and it had to shovel up, it didn't have it down. It looked like they were packing the snow down in the street. I thought it was terrible. I mean, if they can't do a better job, this has been going on for years anyway, this is not the first year. I think you should privatize that. I mean, you have to do something. You can't go over to Ocean Township and see blacktop and Asbury Park be the way it is. It's not right, everybody's talking about it. Bradley Beach was clean, Allenhurst was clean, we're the only ones that weren't cleaned. Now, are we any different than anybody else? Maybe you should get a plan like you have for street cleaning, where alternate side of the street parking takes place so they can clean to the curb, so we don't have to clean on driveways every hour or two when they shovel you in again. I mean, you got to do something, it's not right for the people. And on Pine Street, where everybody's talking about, I thought that was remedied, I thought they spent a hundred and something thousand dollars. From Sue Henderson's house down to the bridge, they all got new curving, there was a, what do you call those things? It looks like a sewer by your house there. I mean, like, but why is there ice again? What is going on there? We paid all that money, and then we have the same problem again? There's something wrong here. You have to remedy the snow removal, it's a disgrace. You can have, have a plan, walk inside the street parking, like you do when you clean the street. You got to do it, you got to do it soon, you can't just keep putting these things on. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was in the community block grant with the library, I guess you're going to use some of the money for the library there? Why don't you try to get the county to take over the library? They do a wonderful job. Go look at Ocean Township and see what a beautiful library they have. We have a beautiful building, they, they might want to take it over, and there'll be one less burden for the taxpayers in this city. You have to do things like that. You got to start privatizing, you can't continue this. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just say that, well, hell's freezing over, because I agree with some of the things you're saying. I said I'm agreeing with some of the things you're saying there, either. So one of the things is, the water, what you're talking about, the homeowner keeps moving the pipe, you're right, the money was spent, it was taken care of, but for some reason, they keep detaching it and rerouting the water, and we just discussed today that they're going to be given a notice that they have to stop doing that. The library has to be put to a public vote, and I see no reason why it shouldn't go into the county system personally, but that would, we can't just do it, we have to put it on a ballot to be voted on.
I think it would be great.
I'm just, I'm just, I don't, I'm just saying, and then the streets meeting was also spoken about in our executive.
So that's today's date, the eighth?
Pardon me?
I want to know what day you agree with me.
Mostly it's in Asbury.
Hello, Mayor, how can I be of help to you and to the audience? What I wanted to, you know, what Rita was saying is, the idea is that maybe on, when you know there's going to be snow, that you can't park on the north side of the street and the east side of the street, so the snow plow could go to the curb on the pile of snow, then the next day, it'd be easier for the city to clean up the snow on the other side, and then the people could park where the car, where it's clean. But what happened is, when the snow pile goes down the street, when there's one car parked, that means you can't clean the street for four parking spots. And she was right to say, when we were on Maza, even the side streets, you could see the blacktop, but as soon as you came over the bridge, Sunset Avenue was covered with an inch of snow and ice, and all the other streets were the same way. And now with all the streets seem to be cleaned, though, it seems to be the problem starts at the bridges. That's about it, thank you very much. I was wondering, I want to say, when it plowed Main Street, that the young lady said she wondered if the city is friendly to businesses, because you wouldn't believe all the snow that was piled on the sidewalk. The last I heard, pedestrians kind of have their right of way, why are they piling snow in piles four foot high on the sidewalk to clear the street where the businesses, the sidewalk should be cleaned there all times, not used to the place for four inch snow. I mean, we're a city, not a country town, we're supposed to be people friendly for walking, and that's all I wanted to add on. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask, have we ever done alternate side for snow coverage?
Some streets, it's supposed to.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everyone, Happy New Year. We want to start this new year right, I'm sure, on face you, mumble. But like I said, Happy New Year, and I hope everyone have a blessed year and peaceful, and welcome new city manager. First of all, my name is Dwayne Small. I'm a former charter state commission member. I'm one of the ones that will be responsible for the change that I've been, and the other members of either town, Shelly, and Randy, and I'm also the third district representative, Democratic representative, the mayor. That's my chairman over there, Joe. Happy New Year, Joe.
And the mayor's going to ask you once again to address the council.
Okay. I was trying to talk to him.
Well, you can talk to him later.
But I got something for him that he has to, you know, when he stood up there, you know, he spoke about what he wanted to do with his credentials and all that. But one of the things that it said that I think a lot of people miss in here, that he wants to be part of the gentrification in Asbury Park, that's a very touchy subject. And that's one of the things that has been going on, you know, the people complaining about people who are wealthy, the LGBT community, the immigrants coming over to take it from the African-American community, you know, and that's something, I know we don't want that, but that's something that, as a city manager coming in, he was saying, he has to explain that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Representative Fraydall? For a little minutes, the record meeting of December seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Move it.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Yes, Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A mayoral resolution for a period of December sixteenth to the thirty-first, including social security, Medicare, eight hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars and ninety-four cents. Senator Fraydall?
Yes.
Or yes, Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Bill resolution totaling eight hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Move it.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Worker compensation, first one's three hundred and twenty-three dollars and six cents. Second one's one thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. I'm sorry, one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Next one is five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and eighty-four cents. Next one is sixteen thousand, five hundred and four dollars and thirteen cents. And the next one is twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. And the last one, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Question? And I know the answer, but I don't think the public will see it. I said this last week after, or last month after, the last meeting. Even what I always had to realize, I always thought that meant somebody was getting twenty-six thousand dollars. That meant somebody was getting eight thousand dollars. That's not the case. This is a group of bills with multiple, multiple cases where either doctors' bills, this. You wanna explain a little bit better? Just because everybody's under the impression, oh, someone just got twenty-six thousand, someone just got eight thousand. That's totally not the case. The truth is, audience, don't you think that? But that's not the case. So somebody explain to them what it is.
This one here, for example, twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. That was twenty-four different transactions.
Right. Somebody going to the doctor, somebody going to physical therapy, somebody doing this. But it's not the individual case. That's why I wanted, just so the public know. Thank you.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell? My time is up.
Time's up.
Okay, that is from the work session, the special event, perfect for the waste movement.
Move it. Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And on the a lot of the under appointments, we're reporting from the executive session, the resolution authorizing appointment of the municipal manager authorizing the execution of an appointment given with delay there to move it.
Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Excuse me, one second. Should I speak up now about the appointment?
Absolutely. Which one? Well, Mayor, does this relate to the appointment of the municipal manager that was just approved by the council with that vote?
Do you remember?
I believe Mr. Kay has some more appointments that the council has to make. And at the conclusion of the council appointments, the mayor will then have the opportunity to announce your appointee for the emergency management coordinator position.
Okay, Mayor. Discussing executive session, there's on the zoning board, moving alternate number one to the regular member position. Moving alternate number two to the alternate number one position. Leading ultimate position, moving alternate number two.
Do you have the names that you can announce?
Alternate number one is Michelle McGuire, moving as a regular member. I don't have the second name. I got the chart inside. Number two going to number one.
Daniel Erst.
That's Daniel.
Motion, Mayor.
Move it.
Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Now, with respect to the emergency management.
Yes, as the mayor's appointee, I'd like to appoint Garrett Gigerston Jr. to the position of the emergency manager coordinator.
And moving on to resolutions. Refund tax overpaying at six oh one Saran Avenue in the amount of twenty-one thousand, fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Move it.
Senator.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution for temporary budget. So the regular budget is adopted. Temporary budget, nine million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, fifty-two dollars for the general fund, one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred thousand for the storage facility operating fund, one hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the beach utility fund, two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars for parking utility operating fund, two thousand and forty-eight.
Move it.
Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
What are we gonna do with respect to the renewal of the JIP?
We're tabling it.
Yes.
Oh, I know.
Yes.
Recommendation, and perhaps either Mr. Newell Chandler or our incoming city manager might like to speak to that issue.
City Council, I haven't had an opportunity to review it. I'd like to, I believe the resolution could be approved for Brown and Brown as they would be your broker. However, as far as entering into a contract, I like to put a little more heat on that power broker, quite honestly, to see if they could do a better job for us. There were some underwriters that I cannot see on the list, some of large underwriters that I think they need to go out in contact. And our city attorney advised us that we will still have coverage, so it's not necessary that the contract is approved.
The one caveat to that, though, just so everyone is aware, is that NJIIF was extending the coverage because technically it expired on December thirty-first through today with the understanding that this was going to be approved today. So unless...
So...
I will make the call tomorrow, asking them if they can extend further. I would suggest that they could extend at the current increased rate. But again, just having an opportunity, only for a few minutes tonight, ten and a half percent increase, I'd like an opportunity to see if I can do better than soon.
We can vote on them as our... We can separate the two?
Yes, there are two separate resolutions. One of them is to review the contract that you have with the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. And that is the one that we're considering tabling for the time being. The second one is the resolution appointing a risk management consultant, which is Brown and Brown. That matter, you can proceed with tonight. And if there is any problem, if you should decide to table the first matter, the NJIIF, we can always try to call a special meeting between now and the next council meeting if there is some urgency that's associated with your continued coverage with the NJIIF. We will certainly explore this with them and we will let you know if there's urgency. Otherwise, we'll bring it back to you at the next council meeting.
I think we table?
Should we table both because Brown's fee is contingent on the six percent, five percent because of the increase?
Well, Brown's fee is gonna be contingent on whatever business they place with the city. That's typical in the insurance business. That's the method that the city has chosen. There's other methods in which you can use to hire a broker. I think you do need a broker to negotiate on your behalf. So I would recommend moving with the Brown and Brown contract and tabling the one with the JIP.
Is there a second to table the JIP?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If the second resolution is a resolution appointing a risk management consultant, Brown and Brown, that's an advisory.
Move it.
Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And then you would also need to table your, making your appointments to the, serving as commissioners to the NJIIF until that matter resolves.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
From the work session, resolution appointing class two special officers, Sheriff Daniel, Timothy Griswold, Cobb, Ludwig, Christopher, Lauren, Joseph, Mr. Herr, Herrdea, Brett, Larry, Lindsay Stolk, Justin Data, Ryan Ladies, Stephen Martinson, Asher Smith, Jayon Britt, Kyle Lloyd.
Move it. Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And you got with respect to outlined by the city engineer, resolution authorizing the City Mashberry Park to advertise for competitors' bids for the City Library HVAC upgrade project.
Move it.
Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Also outlined by the engineer, resolution authorizing a contract change orders to increase the original contract by an amount not to exceed two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars for additional works required to repair existing window lease for the community affairs facility improvement project.
Move it.
Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Let's see. The resolutions.
There was a third matter from Jill Clingey, everybody, the South Portwalk Improvement Project, these two.
You mean the bid, right? Go ahead, we'll get to the bid section. Resolution from the executive session authorizing compensation payments to Christine Paul upon her separation from employment in the amount of one thousand, ninety-five dollars and forty-one cents. And for certain compensation on his separation from employment, Benjamin Diaz, forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty...
Move it. Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
From the executive session, a resolution authorizing settlement of certain workers' compensation claims. First one for Benjamin Diaz, ten thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. And the second one is also for Benjamin Diaz, eighteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? Okay, under the ordinance for introduction.
Hey, before you get to the ordinance, Steve, council talked about the possibility of extending the free parking on Wednesdays. I don't know if you want to move that forward while we're doing the resolution section of the agenda.
Yes.
No, this is not, we said, well, we said to the end of February.
Okay.
To March. I wouldn't care if you did it February, March, and April.
Let's just do March.
Let's go to March. And we extended it to the end of February.
Through the end of February. On Wednesdays.
Is there a second?
Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And introduction to the guy who's talking salaries. The hearing will be not at the next meeting, but at the first meeting in February, I believe, or September or May.
Move it.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Also for introduction, the ordinance of authorizing the City Mashberry Park to implant five-year exemption and abatement law granting tax exemptions for certain industrial and commercial improvements and projects, residential dwellings, and superseding law that ordinances granting such exemptions as specified in the order.
Move it.
Second.
Representative Fraydall?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Quinn?
No.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Advertising the coaster on December nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Public care is to be held at this time. Ordinance reappropriating three hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, forty-eight cents. Proceeds obligation not needed for the original purpose in order to provide for installation of a camera system in the city Mashberry Park on the county. Motion, Mayor?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone like to be heard on this ordinance review?
Yeah. What is it about? How about explaining it?
This year, all right, we had bonded. We have a balance in that bond of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-eight cents. What we wanna do is reallocate that bonding to, all right, the purchase of the cameras.
What was it for?
It was originally, all right, put towards the senior center for the Springwood Center. Or is bonded for the Springwood Center. And that's a balance that's left in that bond that wasn't used towards the building of the Springwood Center. So you wanna reallocate it towards that purchase of the cameras at this point.
And that's how much the cameras cost?
It's gonna be approximately that amount.
And we're also refurbishing cameras, too.
We're refurbishing cameras as well.
No, it's more than that.
Well, it's more than that, actually.
It's close to five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
So how long is that bond for? How many years is that?
I don't have that in here. That I'll have to find out.
You don't have the years?
I don't have it on here, no.
Okay, so they didn't use that money in the senior center and?
No.
Yeah, and use it for cameras. You should know how many years.
My oversight on this one, Mia. My oversight on this one.
Okay.
Move it.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the order?